Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting in the Lawndale City Council, the successor agency, and the housing authority to order. I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Cuevas to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by Pastor George Magalini from Hope Chapel.
Mr. Mayor?
Roll call.
And let's do the roll call.
Good evening. Mayor Protem Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yeah.
Councilmember Suarez?
Present.
Councilmember Talavera?
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Okay. Councilwoman, take it away.
Please stand. Remove all hats. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council staff, everyone. Just have a scripture and a short prayer. The scripture is from John 14, verse 27, and it's Jesus, and he says, "Peace I leave with you; my peace I give you. Not as the world gives do I give to you. Let not your heart be troubled; neither let it be afraid." Let's pray. Well, Father God, we thank you for indeed your peace and your presence here tonight. And Lord, we thank you for the peace that you offer all mankind. We thank you for peace with you, peace within ourselves, and peace with our fellow man. And I pray that that peace would increase, Lord, that as it's offered, that people would receive it. And Lord, that we would be instruments of that peace and examples of that peace. We thank you, Lord, for the meeting tonight and your grace upon our leaders. We thank you for their integrity and their wisdom. We also want to just commit the whole city to you, every citizen. We thank you for our first responders and your grace and protection upon them as they protect us. We commit this time to you. I personally pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Okay, let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from our captain, Palomino.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the city council and members of the community. I'm Nicole Palomino, the captain at South Los Angeles Station, and I will be presenting the public safety report for June 2nd through June 16th. And so regarding our notable arrests and investigations. So on June 10th, deputies responded to the area of Inglewood Avenue regarding an automated license plate recognition camera detection of a confirmed stolen vehicle. The responding deputies located the vehicle near 156th Street and Gravilla Avenue and detained the occupants. The LESD helicopter responded to assist with the high-risk traffic stop. After a thorough investigation, the driver was arrested for theft with specific prior convictions, vehicle theft, and possession of burglary tools. The suspect was not a resident of Lawndale. And then on June 14th, at approximately 12:30 PM, deputies responded to 166th Street and Hawthorne Boulevard regarding a grand theft auto that just occurred call for service. They arrived and contacted the victim, who reported that his vehicle was stolen while he was inside of a business. The vehicle was then entered into the stolen vehicle system. At approximately 6:00 PM, deputies were alerted that the stolen vehicle had been detected by an ALPR camera near Hawthorne Boulevard and Manhattan Beach Boulevard. Deputies located the vehicle and detained one juvenile for a grand theft auto. And then regarding our traffic-related incidents, Motorcycle Traffic Enforcement Deputy Morales issued 35 citations during the reporting period for various vehicle code violations, such as failure to stop at a stop sign, failure to stop at a red traffic light, and speeding. And then 18 of those citations were issued for vehicle code violations that occurred on 147th Street. And then lastly, to let the community know, our Neighborhood Watch meeting scheduled for the month of June has been canceled. However, the next meeting will take place in July, but the date has not been determined yet. And so this concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you for that report, Captain. Any questions to the captain's safety report? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of presentations. The first presentation, actually she couldn't make it tonight, but I'll mention her name as well. It's Judy O. O stands for Oziski. She's unable to be here tonight, but we send our congratulations to her in her many years of outstanding services on the beautification committee. But we are joined by outgoing member Daniel Thomas Woods. Join us at the podium. He's outgoing on the Parks and Recreation and Social Services Commission. Mr. Woods, we want to thank you for your service on the Parks, Recreation, and Social Services Commission from August 1st, 2016, to May 1st, 2025. And it's presented by the Lawndale City Council this June 16, 2025, Daniel Thomas Woods, in his real wood. How about that?
Thank you very much for, yeah, I'd like to thank the mayor for putting his trust in me in order to represent the residents of Lawndale, city council, director, mentor, all of staff, and my previous people that I worked with in the commission. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to being an upstanding citizen of Lawndale a long time from here to come. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move our agenda. Let's move on to oral communications. This is when you have the opportunity to speak to the Lawndale City Council, the successor agency, or the housing authority on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to do so, speak to any one of those three bodies, please line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, just approach the podium, begin with your name, please, and at about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the things, the time to start wrapping things up, and it'll be on that screen. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, everyone. I know I said I was leaving. I was kidding. I'm joking. I'm here to introduce to you Caitlin Coulter. She's gonna be the interim library manager for Lawndale Library. I am officially out of Lawndale, so she will start, her first day will be tomorrow. So, here to introduce her.
Hi, everyone. Great to meet you. My name's Caitlin Coulter. I just want to remind everybody that we have lunch at the library starting this week from 12 to 1. Summer Stars tutoring starts this week as well. We have tutoring for math and reading for kids in the afternoon. Families can sign up for sessions online. And our summer discovery program is underway for anyone who wants to participate, toddlers, babies, all the way up to adults. Anyone can get in on the fun this summer, and you can sign up at the library or online. Other than that, I'm excited to be here. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, council. My name is David Posnansky. I'm a proud Lawndalian resident. I wanted to use my comment here today to raise awareness of several items, in part for folks that are not able to or don't feel safe voicing their opinion at this time. As you all know, ICE is currently carrying out large-scale, often indiscriminate kidnappings, enforcement actions across LA and the South Bay. At elementary schools, at places of worship, graduations, cruel callous, and bringing a lot of fear to the community. LASD's official policy is that they do not work or assist with any ICE actions. However, given this current circumstances, I want you to ask them to please reiterate their commitment to that standard. I've lived in Lawndale since 2021, and I have always felt safe in this community, in part due to my privilege, and I just want the same for our law-abiding, tax-paying neighbors, many of whom are being swept up in these raids. I would also like to raise awareness for the No Kings Rally that was held this past weekend in Torrance. There were over 15,000 attendees there. As I witnessed with my own eyes, it was completely peaceful. It was very uplifting, and it was a great show of support across the South Bay. People standing up for due process, people standing up for the future of this sacred land, and that we stand together in the South Bay, not for what is easy, but for what is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. But I'm, I'm very proud to live in a Lawndale district, and I have kids going into the school of Lawndale district. But it's been a long time that it's, we've been having a hard time dropping off our kids in the morning due to the tickets that we're receiving. As, on May 28, I received this ticket saying that I, I was violated for stopping at the non-stopping area. Actually, I was not voluntarily stopping. I was just waiting for the car to move ahead of me so I can go into the school parking lot to drop off my kids. At no times, I turn off my engine or park my car. And I, after I received the ticket, I went to municipal office to clarify things and file the report, but nobody replied back to me or follow up with me. So, I just wanted to point out that for next school year, we just want to have like, when we're dropping off, especially I go like, early in the morning, just to avoid traffic and all these things. So, I don't think it's fair for me to get a ticket when I'm just waiting for the car right in front of me to go into the parking lot while he took my picture. And they were telling me that no stopping, no stopping, but I was not stopping because my engine is on. And at no time, like, I put my car in park. I was moving, but I would just voluntarily pass due to the car in front of me that was going into the school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi there. My name's Andrew Blackney. I'm a resident of Lawndale on 147th Street. I believe you all, I hope you all have watched the video that I sent to you, as well as to senior manager more, of the cars that were speeding at an excessive double, about like, around double the speed limit on 147th Street. And this is why physical implements are required. I believe you heard earlier today in the report that 18 of the traffic tickets were cited on 147th Street. It's a lot of tickets relative to one street in the city. And I thought that I would let you guys know that in England, they actually have a specific term for speed bumps. They call them sleeping policemen because they're ever-present. They're always there. They're not gonna ticket you, but they're going to make sure that you follow the law. That's what physical implements do. They make sure that you follow the law. We, I'm sure that, I'm sure that we would love to have Sergeant, Sergeant Smith there every single day, 24/7, although I think you might have to fight with his, with his wife and kids about that. I think that they would have issue with that. But the best, next best thing is to have one of those sleeping policemen there, have some sort of physical implement to make people follow the law. So, I hope that the video just kind of is again, another shocker to you of, yeah, this stuff happens. I know we're trying to address it, and I just want to put, as best I can, my input into there telling you guys that physical implements are what will work. More policing, great, but it's only gonna work while they're there. I'm sure that they'll tell you that. I'm, I implore you to ask one of the sheriff's departments here and ask them, do you think that if you were to do extra ticketing, that that would help in the times that you're not there? And if so, how long until it becomes back to normal? Because I'm sure that they can give you a lot of good information on that. But physical implements, they will always be there. They will always be making people obey the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Holly Osborne from Dondo Beach. You know, I always try to bring up new things on the metro, and that's gonna be coming up soon, so you're gonna hear in advance of one of my speeches. And I hope it's informative. That's the only reason I do this here. Okay. Metro has presented several specious arguments for the green line on the row as opposed to Hawthorne Boulevard. Here is one of them. Metro will make the row quiet zone-ready. In a quiet zone, the existing freight train would not have to sound its horn when it comes to a quiet zone crossing. These crossings are primarily distinguished by a double set of crossing arms, two on each side, as opposed to just one on each side. However, even if a zone is quiet zone-ready, the city still has to apply to the FRA to approve the non-horn operation. Pomona has a quiet zone established in 2007. It has heavy rail trains passing through over 100 times a day. Glendale has a quiet zone established in 2017, and trains pass through 90 times a day. On the row in Lawndale, the freight train passes through twice a day. Not 100, not 90. What we are concerned about is the noise from 200 to 300 LRT trains passing each day, and a quiet zone does nothing to mitigate that. Don't be fooled by that argument. So, I'm gonna be talking to a committee, and I'm gonna say, please do not be quiet when these disingenuous type, genius types of arguments are presented for the row. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman, resident of Lawndale. I was coming by to say to you guys, I got my agenda last week. It's pretty heavy. So, I would like to start by thanking city staff, our department heads, and our city manager on managing what took forever, I'm sure, and pretty stressful in putting together tonight's agenda. And to you council members, I would just like to make a suggestion that we do something to prioritize so that everything doesn't hit on one agenda. And when it comes to looking at an item, maybe balancing it a little bit better, because I know I had a hard time doing my homework, and I'm a homework doer. I'm sure each one of you had the same problem doing your homework. So, something to think about, balancing it. Not everything has to be done on the same night. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I just wanted to speak on behalf of folks in the South Bay who happen to be living within a few blocks of the row. And I wanted to actually pass these out. I'm gonna read a little bit from them, hot off the presses, because I think it's important for all city council members to understand that time is of the essence of metro, that they've been, you know, not being transparent for a very long period of time. And now they say that they're moving ahead within the next few months. So, what's going on? Metro plans to certify the final EIR, Environmental Impact Report, for the sea line to Torrance in late 2025. And we already know that they plan to do that right through Lawndale. We'd have to pay, pay for some of that. We don't get our own, we don't get our own station, and we lose the little green space that we have. It would greenlight two light rails and the existing freight track through dense neighborhoods. And there apparently has been some misunderstanding that somehow there's a track there, and therefore all of these trains would be using this track. No. The train track will be moved over closer to homes, and two brand-new light rail, electric light rails, will be right next to it. It's a lot in a small amount of space. Metro is overpromising. They probably don't even have enough money to finish it, which of course means that they're gonna tear up that whole row and let it sit there until they get more money. And in the federal environment that we live in now, it could be years. So, it's not just a matter of, oh, the trains are gonna be running back right now. It'll probably take a decade for them to finally get it all done. In the meantime, it'll look horrible. So, I'm hoping that the city council is aware of this, is ready to do whatever they need to do. We have printed out information, both in English and Spanish, right? My daughter is fluent in Spanish, and I want to make sure that you get each, each one of you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Matthew Harbison, Lawndale Wesleyan pastor. Just wanted to give you a couple notes of thank you. We saw a lot of the red wrappings around some of the stop signs, especially around where the schools are at. I saw that some of the stop signs have been repositioned to be higher or lower based on whether cars are blocking it so you can see it at better angles. So, I appreciated it, and I know that when we had our graduations that were going on, some of the residents who were there said, hey, I saw the stop sign. So, whether they would or wouldn't have in the past, the fact that they made a comment that they saw it, or at least they saw the red, that was a good thing. So, thank you for following up on that. Frank, I want to say thanks for showing up to the Hawthorne Lawndale Ministerial Association the other day. So, I'll be here in a couple weeks to invite you all to the next one, but again, thank you for being there. And I'm also gonna advocate again, when oral communications are up, I'm wondering if the librarian can be exempt from the three minutes in case there's more things that need to be discussed, and she goes, three minutes and 20 seconds. I'd hate for those 20 seconds to miss something. So, again, for oral communications, I've asked it before, just gonna put it out there again for you. The last thing is that with some of the unrest that's going on throughout the county specifically that involve the Sheriff Department that involve the Sheriff Department, understand that some of the non-essentials may take longer than the, maybe non-emergency calls may take longer than the recommended time in which we, I think we're supposed to say they're supposed to be there within an hour. I had an incident that happened near my house and when I called, it was right in the middle of everything. They said, we don't have enough officers to guarantee we'll get there within the hour, but we'll try to do our best. So I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure residents are aware that when they call, if there's something, they need to make sure they're very clear on what they're saying because if there's a catastrophe, we need to get people there. But if there's things going on in other parts of the city because they're, the county, because we're short-staffed, then we just need to understand the delay and things. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close public comments and bring it up to the diocese for responses. Let's hear from Councilman Terevere.
Good evening. I'm glad everybody's here this evening. And Michelle, we're going to miss you, but good luck to you. And we welcome Caitlin to our city. And I think also maybe we could, you know, if we could agendize her talk to us so she can, I feel like they're rushed also, like Michelle's been rushed and, and I just would like it to be a little slower so I can write down and catch some of the programs and, you know, I think my question is, I always ask, is it online? And it is, but it's a nice presentation, so if it's something we could do, we could do. I know we're pressed for time sometimes and Rhonda brought it up about prioritizing our agenda. And I don't know if it's because I'm the new guy on the block, you know, I don't mind staying till 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock in the morning, okay? But I know, but myself, yeah. Okay. But my, my family's grown and, and I'm, I'm available. I'm retired, so, you know, so I ain't got that time. It was a lot to read, but I read through it all and it was okay. But I understand that sometimes there's a lot, sometimes it's slim pickings, but I think we all do our best to get through it and I, at least I try to get, you know, get through it all. But I appreciate the concern. I appreciate the wisdom that was brought forward. And so once again, Caitlin, we welcome you and we hope that you're here for a long time. And Michelle, I don't know how long you were here with us.
How long?
Okay, well Caitlin, make it six at least, okay? So, and David, I share your concerns about what's happening with the raids that we've seen in the, in the news and the protests that have been going on. So I think our residents, some of them are, are, you know, in fear of what might happen. Even I'm in fear of what might happen because it seems like I'm the right color and I look the, the right race. So, so it's unfortunate that, that that happens. So what do I do now? I have my, my passport card with me, you know, so just in case. So it's ridiculous that I think that I have to do that, but hey, if that's what it takes, you know, that's what I'll do. But not everybody has that ability, but I'm fearful for those that don't. And I just hope that our city can somehow send out that message that we're here for them. You know, I know on the news, a lot of cities have, have been vocal about it, but there's really not much we can do other than just say, we're standing with you. You know, we, I mean, if, if Newsom can get arrested, I guess little Landale City Councilman can get arrested too. So it wouldn't be in our best interest to try to interfere, but the concern is genuine and, and I hope that soon this all goes away and, or we come to some agreement. So, but I do want to appreciate those protesters that are doing it completely peaceful. And, you know, and this is my own opinion, but sometimes things have to come to a point where it's boiling point. I'm not advocating unrest, but till when, up to what, what's the point where you're going to be allowed to be beaten down? The school bully is, is going to be a bully until when? Until someone stands up to him? So, so I just want to say, you know, it's, hopefully it never gets to that. But, but definitely a peaceable rally would be, would be first and would be utmost. You know, I think about the, the Boston Tea Party, you know, what happened then? So, you know, sometimes it comes to a point where you have to take action and that action has to be sometimes severe. But hopefully cooler minds will prevail and those people that are in, in leadership, starting with our president, can come to reason. So, and for the lady that talked about her getting cited for a ticket, I know dropping off students is very, very stressful, okay? Nowadays. In my day, probably, if I say our days, I'm talking about Pat and me. We didn't get, we didn't get a ride to school. We walked to school. So, you know, mom, my mom had a car. She says, take me home. Take you where? To school? No, walk, you know? So, but apparently parents don't want to do that and, and, you know, times are different too. So, but I think if we had a conversation with the districts, you know, I mean, I know they have cutouts, but sometimes just the cars are, there's just so much. There's so many and I don't know what else we could do to help alleviate that problem. And definitely you're doing something to protect your family, to help your student be successful, getting them there on time. And I'm sure it doesn't feel good when someone writes you up a ticket. So maybe we can have a conversation on that, see what we could do or talk with the school district, see how they can help alleviate that problem. And I know they have someone out there in the mornings and after school trying to direct traffic and, but, I mean, well, there's so many cars, I mean, there's so little you can do. I mean, there's, it's just that way. So, but we're, we'll take it into consideration. We'll have a conversation and we hope that we can come to a solution. Andrew, yeah, I saw some of those videos. I don't know if you're Lionel the Cat or whoever it is, but yeah, it's, it's very, that's just blatant disrespect for the driving rules, okay? They're not stopping, they're not even trying to stop. It's not, it's worse than a California rule. So, but I think we're hearing your, we're hearing your plea for help, you know, and, and I didn't realize before sitting on this diocese that, you know, a street has to have certain qualifications to be a street and a certain kind of street and, and certain regulations and certain widths and certain lengths in order to qualify for some help. So, you know, I hope there's a way that we can triage this situation, you know, because yeah, when I saw those videos, I said, wow, these people are not even stopping. I mean, it's not just, it's, it's, it's worse than what I think was, has been presented here. But definitely we need to do something. We have to continue. I know we're doing a, a street survey, but, you know, I just hope we can, can get it under, under control. And yeah, Metro, C-line, from the times that I've met with the people of the Row and also the different, like the Senator and also Holly Mitchell, it's like, the C-line is just telling us fibs, you know? We want to hear something that's going to be, you know, in our favor, but they're just not doing that. And I think they're not being transparent like Annette was saying, you know? Things would go much better if they were transparent, but they're not being that. They're not doing that. And, you know, I can't really say that I trust them. You know, I take what they, what they say with a grain, like a grain of salt, you know, because nothing they have said so far and nothing that I've learned through, through sitting in on the discussions with the Row has convinced me that Metro's saying, hey, yeah, we're going to consider that. They're not. So, I mean, I don't know, I, I wouldn't know what to do. I mean, I just wish we could do something. And it's like I said before, you know, like an old Western movie, you know, someone has a waterways of a ranch and what they do is put a dam or they put something where, hey, yeah, you know, you, you can't pass this way no more. There's a fence now, you know? And so it's just, it's just unfortunate, but we're going to keep on fighting, you know? And I'm going to keep helping, you know, attending the meetings and doing, learning more and more and be with, be with the people of the Row and now the South Bay Environmental Justice Alliance, okay? So shout out to all those people. And Matt, yes, I've seen some of the stop sign wrappings also. I don't really know if, if they contribute to, to helping, you know, people obey the rules, but I, you know, we do, we have to do what we have to do. We have to try. I mean, we can't just sit and fold our arms and not do anything. So I appreciate the department that has went out and wrapped those signs and made our stop signs a little more visible. And, and it was good seeing you over there too at the, at the meeting. That's what I got to say. Oh, wait a minute. I want, I wanted to give an update on the, our ad hoc committee met regarding the National Hispanic Heritage Month Festival?
That's later on.
Oh, later on? Oh, these are just comments? Okay. All right. I'm finished then.
He's ready to form.
Okay.
Okay.
He's ready for war. Okay, Councilwoman, sorry.
Okay, well, I think he took most of the talking points, but that's fine. I'll keep it short. The question, thank you, by the way, to everybody that came up and spoke. It's nice to see a, a nice, healthy crowd today. I did have a question because it brought up, Matthew Harbison brought up the sheriffs and the non-essential calls. Is there any update you can get, can give us regarding response times and how that's being impacted, just so the community's aware?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. It is a very important topic. I just want to start off by ensuring the community that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that response times are where they are supposed to be. We have had some incidents come to light at the last second that we had to respond to, but we're doing a really good job of making sure that all the cars are properly staffed. But what I will do is I will check our response times for the past two weeks and get those over to you.
Thank you, just so that the public's aware. And thank you, David, for, for your comments. And I think it's always, you know, advisable to have, if you're going to go to a rally peaceful and whatnot, we don't want any violence or anybody hurt. So public safety is very important. But thank you.
Thank you.
And then with regards to the school drop-offs, we had a subcommittee in the past addressing those tickets. I don't quite remember if there was, I think the subcommittee may have worked with the district in sub-capacity to figure out how we can make it more streamlined so that parents were aware and whatnot. I think this example, staff probably look into, try and figure out, you know, what exactly the situation was. But do we have, did, was there a conclusion that came? Because I can't remember.
Mayor, Council, I'll defer to the ad hoc members.
We did have a discussion with the school district. I brought up to them, the ad hoc brought up to them, especially at Jane Adams. I don't know where your child goes, Jane Adams. We tried to get the three where the teacher's parking is for 7th grade, 8th grade on Marine and 6th grade in front of my, I live on 153rd Place in front of my house. And they kind of fell on deaf ears. They didn't want to hear it. They were about changing to school times. But I think you can talk to Mike and we can work something out about next year. But I understand you're probably pulling into the cutout on Jane Adams. But if you're on this street, that's a gray area, so maybe you talk to Mike and he could help you out with that. But we did talk to the school district and, and I brought that idea to that school and like I said, it fell on deaf ears.
So.
She'll turn it back to you.
Sorry, sorry. This time we only give comments, but afterward you can come to staff and speak to them individually. But I think it might be, if it, if it was never resolved, it may be time to reconvene the subcommittee, especially since school's out and there will be time to figure out how to handle the upcoming school year, if anyone has the time to volunteer for it. You know, but that's just my suggestion. And then the, I've been watching, with regards to 147th and the speed, I have been watching also those Lionel the Cat YouTube videos. There's a resident who posts video camera of the way that residents interact with that stop sign. And basically, if you look at the videos, it's as if there is no stop sign and it's just straight, I, you know, it's, it's pretty disturbing, to say the least, the way that some people just run right through it. So we are taking a look at it and exploring all the options of how to make those streets safer. More to be determined. And then with regards to Holly and Annette, thank you for bringing up Metro. I think our subcommittee should be meeting, if I'm not mistaken, soon. But yeah, I'm not quite sure when they plan to agendize it. I'm guessing it's just going to be, you know, when no one's expecting it, how they usually do it. But we'll keep close eyes on it and I'll wait for the subcommittee to kind of give us an update, hopefully by the next meeting that we have. And with that, I want to thank everybody that came out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Quavis.
All right. My colleagues said everything, but thank you, everybody, for coming out and sitting in the audience, speaking to us and those that are watching us. Thank you, South Bay Environmental Justice Alliance, for putting these little flyers together. I know it's also online and on an email blast and I'll pass it along.
Okay. Mr. Pro Tim, Pat Kearney.
Thank you, Robert. I want to thank you, everybody that came out tonight. Michelle, we'll miss you. Caitlin, welcome. David, I'm on board with the ICE, with the ICE moving all over this city, around the city, the county, on the cities and the schools. There's one thing I want to say. Somebody asked me if I was approached, what would I do? Because I don't know if you don't, I'm a half breed. So they can deport half of me to back to Ireland if they wanted to. But the other half, they can deport me back to the United States. I'm here already. So this whole thing with ICE, it's, it's ridiculous. Ticket, young lady, talk to Mike when you get a chance. Andrew, I saw the video from your second-story balcony and it was like a racetrack, like, I don't know if you remember Ascot Park, but Frank and I probably know Ascot Park. That's where they, how they used to race over there. Dr. Osborne, great information. And Ms. Owens, same thing, great information. Matthew, they put the red wraparound JDAM School and it's a day, Monday. Saturday night, two cars ran into the flower bed. And it was at night, so they saw the reflector, but you know, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. And with that, I'll pass it on to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, my colleagues pretty much said it all, but I want to thank Ms. Owens for this brochure, both in English and Spanish. Thank you. And Caitlin, welcome. Michelle.
Adios.
Adios amigos, amigos. But you know, we said bye to you last, last time. Okay. David, thank you for bringing up the ICE raids. I work in the city of LA and I'll tell you what, especially when you go downtown, it is terrible. And the way they're, they're handling those people, or handling people in general, is despicable. And so I want to just thank you for, for bringing that up. Young lady who had the, yeah, go ahead and talk to Mike. Go ahead and talk to Mike and we'll, we'll get that resolved for you. Andrew, thank you for the, the video. Rhonda, thank you for mentioning the agenda. Okay, I already, I already mentioned these, okay? And that's all I have. Thank everyone for coming out. Okay, let's move our agenda. Okay, we're on. Okay, we're on item G, the consent calendar. Three through seven, what is the pleasure of this body concerning item G?
Well, there's no...
I'll motion to approve if there's no opposed.
I'll second that. Additional subtractions?
Even if there are opposing, you can still motion. Okay, so the motion's been made by Quavis and seconded by Kearney. Any discussion on item G? Okay, will the council please vote?
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item H is also a consent calendar, calendar for the successor agency. Item eight through nine, what is the pleasure of the agency?
So moved.
Second.
Agency member Kearney moved it and seconded by agency, successor agency member Suarez. Any discussion on it? Will the council please vote? Bernadette Suarez. Okay, moving right along. Okay. Go ahead.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. All right, moving right along.
Apologize for my slowness.
Okay. Right, right. Right, okay. Item I, it's a consent calendar of the Longdale Housing Authority.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, item I, the Longdale Housing Authority, item 10, was moved that we approved by Kearney. And seconded by Quavis?
Yes.
Yeah. Will the council please vote?
For item number 10, the motion passes unanimously.
That was part of the consent calendar for the successor agency. Eight through nine was a consent calendar for the successor agency.
We have a different in our script.
Okay.
It's all good.
I'm going by this.
Well, we tuned records into obstruction, but that's okay too.
Okay. All right, let's move on to item J, under administration, for the City Council Successor Agency and the Housing Authority.
Sorry, can I?
Number 11.
Ask a question? Because we have a, an item, the Southwest Patrol, which is part of the budget. Can we, is it possible to discuss that first? Or since it's already been adopted, do we have to do it in this order?
Which one is that, 14?
The Southwest Patrol's later on in the book. She wants to bring it forward first. I believe that's what she wanted to do.
No, we're on 11.
But the budget contains...
Yeah, annual budget, fiscal budget.
It contains that in there, or does it not matter since it was already passed the first time around last?
Hold on, let's ask the city attorney.
So yes, number 14 would require a budget amendment, I believe. I'm asking the Director of Finance, but I believe depending on what happens, it could require a budget amendment. It doesn't necessarily, but it could.
Yes, it could. Actually, the amount that's in the budget is more than one of the proposals, so it's gonna end up bringing it down, basically.
So when, I leave it up to the wisdom of the council as to whether to take it first or wait until after the sort of perfunctory budget adoption is done. If you do, in either way, we'll wind up coming back with a budget amendment because I don't think the director will go in and modify the budget tonight to reflect whatever direction is given. So you'll have a budget adopted before July 1 and then you'll wind up with, with an amendment in the next month or so.
Okay, so what is the pleasure of this body concerning, concerning it? You want to just adopt the budget and then when it comes back?
I would, because it's due before July 1st, this budget, right?
Yeah.
So I say we go ahead and approve it.
Okay.
And then we can bring it back to amend it at a later date, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Mayor, I want to call your attention, the, we want to withdraw the item 2022, Mr. Mayor, and bring it back at a later date, consideration of the urgency ordinance. You guys wanted to act on that now and just pull it off the agenda as well.
Okay, is, is that on, would that be part of this motion?
No.
If we didn't, okay.
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm just bringing it up to your attention.
Okay, when we get to that item, we'll, we'll pull it. Okay. So what is the pleasure of this body concerning item 11, the annual budget?
I'll make a motion to accept it as written right now, so we get it under the deadline.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney, seconded by Quavis. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate my comments from the last meeting that I wasn't in agreement with the, the security guard services, which is gonna be discussed later, but for that reason, I would be a no.
Okay, thank you. Will the council please vote?
Wait.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to recommend an addition, two additions to the, to the budget for tonight under the City Council memberships and dues to include the National Association of Latino Elected Officials. There's a conference coming up and there's an annual membership due. So I'd like to know if, if we can include that in the budget, either for one or two of us. I think it's very important that, that we have representation and we get information from other Latino elected officials. And I would, I sort of did some numbers there and if it was two, two members that wanted to attend and, I don't know, it just depends on the person's, I guess, viewpoint. I'm, I'm not only looking or thinking locally at Longdale, I'm thinking regionally at least, of things that's, that's happening and information that can, we can get to. There's other, there's other memberships that, that we have that maybe they're not even as effective for us as a city, but I would like to include the National Association of Latino Elected Officials. I would bring, if my calculations are correct, depending on the membership type that one selects, there's, you can select a yearly or you can select by your term if it's four years. So I did it based on a four-year term. So it would be approximately, plus attending the annual conference and, and the lodging and the, and the airfare. It would come to, for like two, two council members, to the amount of almost $6,000. It's a four-night event. Sometimes it's here, sometimes it's in Atlanta, sometimes it's in Vegas. It's in different spots, so I know, I know the price will fluctuate. So that's the, that's one recommendation I want to ask for you, the council members, to consider, to add that. And the second one is, again, it's, I'm, I'm talking for myself. I know everyone, everyone has their priorities, everybody has their, the, the things that they think that they need, but I would like to recommend that our discretionary fund be raised to 3,500. There's things that I'd like to do, there's things, the people that I'd like to meet and some of the things that we have to do as council members. I know Mayor, the Mayor and I, we attended Senator Laura Richardson's swearing in, but the honest, the honesty is that I don't like to show up places empty-handed, at least with a, a small token of appreciation or something that, that tells us that, lets people know that we appreciate them, that we're, we stand by them. So... And what I've been doing for like the seniors for Mother's Day and today for Father's Day celebration, I bought little gifts for them, for the dads and the moms. And so they really, the seniors really loved it, you know, and, you know, I can't continue doing that from my own pocket, which I've been doing, but, so it's, I think it's just, the city has to allow us to do a little more work in that area. And like I said, that's what, that's how I feel and that's what I, that's what I want to do as a council member. You know, I want to get more out into the community. I want to have maybe coffee chats with, with residents, you know, but I can't do it on my own. So those are my two recommendations for, for this budget.
Okay, thank you for that. Bernadette Suarez.
Regarding the discretionary fund, if I'm not mistaken, it's very specific as to what we can use those funds towards. And I'm not quite sure if it's a lot permissible for some of it to give, and I'm not quite sure what gifts we're talking about. You know, sometimes we give pins out or whatnot. I would have to double check. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I know that there's a few times I've requested donations to certain nonprofits and you have to, there's certain specific criteria in order to expend those funds, since they are public funds. We'd have to double check with that, what our policy is.
I'll have to go through the City Council policies. If you keep going, I can do that right now.
Ms. Quavis.
Are these things that we could add when we revise the budget, depending on the decision?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Council, you guys can add in. This is your chance to add in and revise the budget as, as directed. This is your opportunity.
But we would vote for the current budget and then revise it, or do we?
No, you can include as part of the action, those updates requested by Councilmember Talver.
And then you guys bring it back in?
Yes, we can put it back in and update it.
Okay.
Now, do we have to do that tonight?
I don't think so.
You don't have to do it tonight. You could bring this back as budget amendments.
Yeah, I think that's what she was asking.
Yeah. Or you could, you could put, try and put it in tonight, work with the, the Director of Finance on that, or you could have us come back with a staff report and an explanation of this and then make budget amendments based on what you decide when you're presented with that.
Yeah, I, I think I'd rather you bring it back so I can fully digest it.
I would, any additions or subtractions, I would like to bring it back so that we could pass the budget before July 1st. But I, I do like a few of the items you're bringing up.
Thank you. And then Mayor Council, we could do a little research on some of the, the comments from Councilmember Talver and bring it, bring a full report to you.
Okay. There seem like there's a motion on the floor.
There is.
It's been...
But you have two people.
Yeah, yeah, I know. There's a motion on the floor that's, that's being made and seconded. And so we're in discussions now. The question is, do we vote now? Should we listen to the, the public, hear the public on this item?
I think you're required to hear public comment before making a decision, if I'm not mistaken.
If, if public comment comes up while, before, the, the time for it has, has ended, yes. And, and so I would, I would recommend hearing the public comment and then moving to the motion on the floor.
Okay, let's hear some public comment.
Hi there. I'm sure I'm everyone's favorite Longdale resident at this point, Andrew Blackney here. So I just was reviewing the proposed budget and what stood out to me is that over a third of our budget is for the sheriff's contract and that's, and that, that seven and a half-ish million dollars to get four sheriff's department officers, but sometimes ideally you'd have more, but realistically not and probably less, is very expensive to me, especially when the, when those units are utilizing a substation at the, at the city here and we're not getting the unit, we're not getting our guaranteed set from our contract at all points in time. I know that's been a point of contention. I'm not saying that the sheriff's county, sheriff's officers don't do a good job. They do a great job. They're just, it's hard for them because they're understaffed and they're serving a lot of different areas. I would like to ask if the city has looked into contracting with other law enforcement agencies in the area, such as like a Redondo Beach or a Hawthorne or even a Torrance Police Departments, and seeing if they can serve us better than having the sheriff's department there. Maybe they can even serve us in ways that the sheriff's department cannot and in ways where we would be able to save money on the Southwest Patrol, if they could do the work of homeless outreach or offer some assistance in that way. I just, I think it'd be worthwhile to look and seeing what is the elements that we can get from there and is it completely unreasonable? I may be wrong. I, I've never reached out and said, and said, hey, how much would it cost for Hawthorne or Redondo Beach or Torrance to have a, to do a contract for law enforcement in Longdale? But I, I do think that that's quite an expensive sum to pay, especially when it's a, over a third of our budget, to go and not be getting the guaranteed or be able to even have the option to get more police officers if we wanted to, which sounds like something that we are desperately trying to do with Sheriff's Department currently. So I just hope that we look for that and maybe not on this budget because it looks like we're getting there tight on the time with getting this budget approved, but ideally in the next budget, having that trade study. And if we did do that trade study, maybe making it available to the public so that they can see the options and trades that the City Council made. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Hello, good afternoon. Some time ago, I came with my mom to a senior citizen, I guess it was a, how to eat better, exercise and whatnot. My father didn't want to go, she didn't want to come, and I said, no, I'll, I'll go with you. There I met a young, a young lady by the name of Evelyn Lagarda. And she had some ideas that I said, you know what? You should go to one of the meetings and state your ideas, but she said she was shy. So I said, you know what? Let me know some of your ideas and I'll make sure that, when possible, I can address them. And I missed tonight's open comments, but I believe that it could go into the annual budget fiscal year for, for this year. What it is, is that things or the situation monetary-wise, a lot of people who are considered mid-level or, you know, I forget what the word is, that aren't poor but are rich at the same time, that these people are starting to see very hard times just trying to buy food, especially when you are already retired and you get so much a month. She said about $800 a month. She has no, no husband and the kids don't live in California no more. And she had an idea of trying to figure out a way if we could get food for the senior citizens and only for the senior citizens, which I agree, I totally agree for that, to have something here that's either free or less the cost. And I know that it is possible because when I was younger, I used to go work with my uncles in the fields and there's fruits and vegetables that are called deformed because they don't look a certain way. They don't toss those out. They put them in another box and they try to sell them or they try to give them away. So I thought, if that's still going on, I personally would go down there and talk to some of the farmers and see what I could work out and then bring back the news to you, all of you, and see if we can work something out. The only thing is, I haven't thought of, is that's the simple part. The other part would be finding a place to store it and to pass out or sell the fruits and vegetables because they need more, from what I understand, but since there's no more 99 cent stores, that's where everybody was going to, to buy everything at a, at a reduced price or at a good price. Thank you very much. And like I said, I'm not sure if this could go into the budget, but it's an idea. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager and Staff. I am Ray Holler, homeowner in southwest Longdale, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak on budget. I was concerned that because of the hearing, I wasn't gonna get a chance, so thank you. I like getting good value, whether buying apples or Apple computers. By the way, you can get fresh produce, they're all super. By the way, you can get, uh, fresh produce at all super, really good prices over there and good for you. Uh, I compared this $21 million Longdale budget to that of, of Lomita, another small city in the South Bay, and the budget per resident there is about the same, slightly higher. Uh, but some of you know that I spend a lot of time scouring LA Metro's finances, and they spent about $40 million in the fiscal year ending this month on development of the Sea Line Green Line Light Rail Extension, supposedly writing answers to questions during the draft EIR period from long ago, preparing for the final EIR and updating their funding plan. But they have not delivered one word product compared, uh, to the public the entire year, nothing for $40 million. So I try to put these budgets into perspective here, and I thank you for the, um, you know, this $21 million budget. To take care of the whole city for a year seems like a good value to me. And so thanks very much to the Finance Director and staff for providing a very detailed budget and budget, uh, memo. That's being transparent, something else Metro doesn't do. Uh, and thank you very much for noting the possibility of litigation against LA Metro in your budget notes. Uh, that seems fairly certain to happen. And lastly, thank you very much for adding funds for an Hispanic Heritage Festival, celebrating the culture of the majority of Longdale's residents feels right, especially now. I look forward to it. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a, a motion on the floor.
And a second.
And a second. It's been adopted. Well, we'll see. Would the council please vote?
For item number 11, the motion passes with Councilmember Suarez voting no.
Okay. Now we're on item 12, right?
Yes.
Adoption of the fiscal year 2025-26 appropriation limits. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the GAN limit adoption for fiscal 25-26. This was calculated using the methodology and adjustment factors provided by the California Department of Finance. Um, the appropriations limit for 25-26 is $45,733,214. The city's appropriation limit is $18,312,015. And the ci- so therefore the city will, we are well, well under the limit with extra capacity of $27,421,199. Staff recommends city council approve resolution CC 2506-025. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, what is the pleasure? Does any questions on the, the staff report?
If not, I'll make a motion to go to the stack for the nation, to adopt resolution CC 2506-029.
And I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made that we approve such resolution by Kearney and seconded by Suarez. Any discussion on the motion? Would the council please vote?
For item number 12, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Item 13 is the annual investment policy resolution.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so this is the annual investment policy resolution. Um, Government Code 53607 allows the legislative body to delegate authority to invest or reinvest funds of the city to the city treasurer for a one-year period, subject to annual renewal. So this is the annual renewal. In going through it, there were no changes or edits to the investment policy. We are in accordance with, uh, the California state guidelines, and we're actually a little bit stricter than that. Uh, so there were no changes, so staff recommendation is that for council to approve resolution CC 2506 is 029. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the report?
If not, I'll make a motion to accept stack for the nation, uh, CC 2506-029.
Motion's been made by.
Correction, because I gave the wrong CC number on the last one. It was BO 25.
Okay. Motion's been made by, um, Mr. Pat Kearney.
And I'll second it.
Seconded by Frank Talavera. Please vote.
For item number 13, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we're moving right along. Item 14 is the approval of an agreement with Southwest Patrol.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. The staff report you have before you is for the approval of agreement with Southwest Patrol. As the council will recall, two years ago, Southwest Patrol started patrolling the city for us using funds from ARPA that was donated from the federal government as a, as a way to offset costs from the COVID-19 pandemic. We prepaid for that, uh, two years of service. The contract is about to end, and now the staff is coming before you to request, uh, continuation of this contract with Southwest Patrol. Uh, there are three options that we have before you. Option A is to increase our existing contract from 96 hours per week to 112 hours per week, which would provide seven days a week of coverage, as well as seven nights a week, which would give us 16 hours of every single day with coverage. Uh, this option does not include holidays. Uh, the holidays recognized by Southwest Patrol. There are nine holidays that are listed on the staff report. Um, option number two would be, option two and three are both a, a reduction of the amount of guard times, which reduce the 96 bill of hours to 80 hours per week. That would give us five nights of coverage and five days of coverage. Um, option three is similar to option two. Uh, the only difference being that there would be no coverage on the holidays in option three. Uh, option three is the cheapest, um, but, uh, the staff has recommended we go with option A, excuse me, option one, which would be the most expensive option. Uh, each of these can, uh, each of these options also has a 5% contingency added into them. That concludes my report, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of the report? Suarez.
I have a, a number of questions. Because in the report, it says that the Southwest Patrol officers do homeless outreach.
Correct.
I checked, which, by the way, the contract's not attached here, so I'm referencing the one that was done two years ago. It only says that they're going to be basically, in a nutshell, contacting homeless individuals and kind of cleaning encampments. It doesn't actually say outreach. So when you say outreach, are these individuals actually, um, trained clinically, socially as workers? Or they're just making contact?
Uh, they are not. They're just making contact. In the two years they've been with us, there's been over 1,000 contracts by, uh, contacts by Southwest with homeless. Um, every, in, uh, every contact with homeless begins with an introduction and offer of service. Uh, if service is accepted, uh, we do have, uh, cards that we fill out. We get the information on the homeless person. It's passed along to me, and I contact our contact, which is Ronson. Um, Ronson usually gets somebody out within 24 hours. If services are accepted, that's wonderful. We'll get them in, into services. If they're declined after they've already accepted, then there's not much we can do. But if service is declined right away, the, the guard will then invite the homeless person to, to move along, if they're on our streets or in our parks.
Because my only concern is they're not actually equipped. Because a lot of these, well, I shouldn't say a lot, I, I don't know, but some of these individual, individuals have mental health issues. And so I think that when you're saying outreach, it probably should be done by individuals that are equipped. Um, for example, um, the Sheriff's Department has, uh, what is their, their?
The Met Team.
Yeah, the Met Team that comes out and if it, if it's a situation. So I'm, I'm kind of wanting to steer away from using them as our contact. I've mentioned Measure A. I made a mistake and I said it was 3 million. That was only the local solutions fund. It's actually a lot more, um, that the, um, that's going to be generated for these types of, uh, outreach services. And, um, and I know for, I'm pretty sure that Measure A will not cover security guards. It has to be something, and I, I checked with Ronson at the COG, and he's actually helped drafting, uh, what the uses you can use, um, for these tax dollars for Measure A. And so that's not going to be able to fly with this. And that's my concern, is that we're using these individuals. I think, um, I also know that the COG is paying for some outreach themselves through St. Margaret's, um, nonprofit. And I can't remember, I think it was Tuesdays or something, that they go out in the city still. Um, but my whole issue is using the, uh, patrol officers as outreach, because I don't think they're equipped to do that. And I think that we need, uh, specialized personnel. A lot of cities these days are actually hiring their own departments. I know we can't afford it, but I would be more, um, if we could get training for individuals, um, even on staff through MSD Department, I think that that might be a little more effective. We can control the, the numbers, the data. We can see the trends. We can see, you know, what, which individuals, and just build better profiles on them. Because having the security guard report it and then, then relaying it to, um, Ronson, it, there's like a lag, and I think that it'd just be effective if we had people right away that could respond to the situation and deal with it, uh, in a, in a more effective way. Those are just my opinions on that part. Um, and then the other part is, um, that I don't believe Southwest is doing this in their other cities. I actually checked with a, a council member or two, um, and I, from what I understand, they work in Bellflower and Lakewood. Um, and I think one of the cities mentioned they're not even armed, because that was the last question I had with regards to what, how much they can actually enforce in terms of being armed security guards. The way that I think it was Lakewood, the way that it was relayed to me was that all they do is observe and report, and they report it to the local authorities or to the city. Um, I don't know that they actually get involved. Um, from what I understand, only peace officers can actually make arrests, unless you do a citizen's arrest, which anybody can do. But there, it's very strict on, um, how you can arrest, you know, individuals, reading them their Miranda rights and whatnot. So the way I see it is Southwest Patrol, they did mention that the uniform helps to deter certain activity. And, and so that was why they looked at it. And apparently this is a big issue coming up in a lot of cities, um, who, who contract with the sheriffs. There's not a lot of, um, options to get extra personnel because, um, they're having hiring issues right now. So they've been looking at other, um, other contracts such as, um, security guards. And so I did speak with a few of them. It seems to be a trending topic. But those are just a few things, as I think a lot of them, um, for example, the other council member I spoke to said that they've actually hired a mental health expert along with somebody, a retired officer, to do the outreach. That way you kind of come in with a little bit better equipped, um, on, on how to handle a homeless individual. And then if it's an individual that, um, you know, may appear, I know there's been situations, you know, even in our city where they've gotten violent, that's when you call in the sheriff. You don't deal with it, you know, any other way. Um, so those are just a few of my thoughts of, I think we need to shift. I know we did this two years ago as kind of a pilot program, but I think that with, if we're using them heavily for outreach, I think there's a better way to do it. Um, but I still do agree that we do need, for example, the community center has been an issue. Um, and I do believe that we do need, um, a security guard there. One step further also, since we've opened the community center to allow people to reserve, you currently have to pay for a sheriff if you have a certain amount of people in your, um, in your celebration or party or whatnot. I think that we should, if it's going to be cheaper to use Southwest, maybe allow that option for residents rather than hiring a sheriff. That way the sheriffs can monitor, you know, uh, around the community, and that gives residents possibly a cheaper option when they do rent the facilities, or maybe not residents, but whoever's renting it. So those are a few ideas that I had, um, off the top of my head.
Okay, Cuevas.
Quick question regarding the armed security. Do, what do they use their weapons for?
Uh, well, just like the sheriff, some of it's for protection and for their own safety. And we've never had an armed guard pull his weapon in the two years we've had them here.
Okay.
But I mean, if, if it came to that, that's.
Is it necessary in, in Longdale, let's say?
I, I would say yes, because we do have these guards. They are by themselves. They are not supported by any other backup, and they're not police officers, so they can't. And they can call the sheriffs if they're getting in trouble, but they don't have a, a line of support. And we do have them on till late in the early morning hours, as early as 2:30. Um, they are, we are asking them to go into our alleys alone. We are asking them to go into our, our, the, the, the train tracks alone. We are asking them to deal with people that do have mental issues by themselves. So, yeah, I believe having them armed is, is very important for their own safety.
And I'm going to put, ask a question to the lieutenant. How do you feel about, I mean sergeant, sorry, Sergeant Smith. I called you lieutenant instead of, I promoted you.
It's a mustache.
Sorry. Um, what's your opinion on the security guard in general? Um, is that something that helps you guys, or is it an impediment, or?
Impediment. I don't think you could put him on the spot to answer that question. I really don't.
Uh, I want his, the sheriff's opinion itself.
I don't think you could put him on the spot like that.
Well.
That's sheriff's opinion against his patrol thing.
Well, how do we know that the patrol is working if they're not working together with them? Is it something that they're doing jointly and they're helping each other? Or is patrol making it harder for the sheriff to?
If you, Director Crescent, if they help out with them, that's fine. But you cannot put the Sheriff's Department on the spot to say whether Southwest Patrol is great.
You could ask, and then he could excuse himself and say, at this time, I don't want to explain it that way. I should, I'm going to do it this way. But I'm asking him his opinion. So he could give me an opinion where he says, you know what? I don't want to touch that point, or this is what, how I feel.
Just don't put him on the spot.
Well, thank you for having me, uh, Mayor, Council. Uh, I can, I can speak to, uh, the past two years of working with Southwest Patrol, and I think, uh, I think it's been an asset. Uh, that would be a anecdotal, uh, opinion. I don't really have anything really specific to, to point you to, uh, other than that they provide valuable information to us when they see, uh, I think, uh, Councilmember Suarez, uh, brought up, uh, observe and report. So I can speak to those things, where we get reports from them, where, uh, they may see something that they don't feel capable or, or, uh, that, something that they shouldn't handle. And, uh, it, it has, uh, mitigated, uh, response to, uh, different types of calls that we may have got before, like, uh, somebody's locked in a park, or that there's a, uh, somebody causing a disturbance at the, uh, the building over there up on that, that third floor. Things of that nature where, where a, uh, a representative or a third-party representative of the city can go handle on, on city property and things, things of that nature. I don't know if that answers your question?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to go back to the part about being armed. Um, here's, here's my concern, is if something were to happen, you know, I, I'm not saying it would, but if there were to be a situation where an armed security guard actually uses something, it, it would come down on us. We would be the ones facing, well, you guys hired them, whatever the situation. Sheriff's, you know, there's been pretty big situations with their, if it's a situation where it's, it seems like it's going to be dangerous, I'd rather them not get involved and rather just call the sheriffs right away for situations that they can identify that, you know, this may not be the best thing. We better call the sheriffs for it. That's my concern, um, because ultimately it's going to come down to us as the hiring agency. Um, so I, I just want to be very careful when we're dealing with armed security. And, um, yeah, I do believe, you know, uh, there are certain situations that may, may not be foreseeable, especially the hours that they're working. But I just want to make sure that they understand too, they're very aware of when to use it, what, you know, and, and that kind of thing. That, that's my main concern.
Thank you for that, uh, question, uh, Councilmember. Uh, that, that's a concern for us as well. Uh, Southwest does carry liability. That's part of the contract that's written in. Um, in the same way, if the sheriff shot somebody or pulled their weapon, we would also be the hiring agency. So, um, they are, one of the benefits of having premium guards is they are, they are well-trained. Um, we do have the same guards. They're, 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 there's not a high turnover because they are paid fairly, fairly well by Southwest. So we do have a, a wiser, smarter guard by, by going with Southwest. And in the two years that we've had them here, we've had no incidents of any violence, any weapons pulled, uh, any problems.
No incidents at all with, no incidents at all with any, any weapon?
No, I'm, I'm not aware of ever them, ever pulling their weapon that I've, and, and we do get daily logs. I get daily logs twice daily from when we have two shifts on, on the days we have two shifts. So, um, yeah, I'm a well-aware of, they're making their rounds. They record everything they do. They're attending all the buildings we want them to go to. They do make, take photos and information, they provide information of all the contacts they make with the homeless. Um, our streets are very, very clean now. Um, whenever we do see homeless on, on the streets, Southwest is there right away to talk to them and then potentially move them along if they don't want services. So I think it has been very successful in the way that they have interacted with homeless, even if they aren't trained. They are, they are getting the information to be within minutes of making contact if somebody wants services. I can call Ronson right away. Uh, the, the delay is typically, the service providers cannot be here the same day. They don't respond immediately. So even though we get the information to them right away, it might be a day or two before they can come out. And then the homeless person may have moved on or may have changed their mind about wanting services. But there's no delay in cer- in the person asking for help, being, and us contacting help to. help to get them help.
And you're talking about, the last part, you're talking about unhoused individuals.
Correct. If, if, if-
I still disagree with that point, and them being the, the front-facing forward, especially when you're dealing with mental health with a lot of these situations. But, my next question is, is are they armed in all, well, the only two cities that I'm aware of are Bellflower and, and Lakewood that they actually do. The other ones, I believe it's a school district possibly, I think, and then some private entity.
So, so Southwest offers armed and unarmed guards? I can't, I don't know which cities have which. I do know Bellflower has armed guards. I do know they interact with the homeless as much as we do. They, they do daily contacts.
They do it themselves, or do they have another individual?
Directly, they directly make contact with homeless, they go into the parks, they ask them if they want services, if they don't, they ask them to, to move along.
But only armed? They don't have like another individual?
They don't have any unarmed guards with Bellflower, no.
Okay, so it's just Southwest that makes outreach to individuals, but no other city staff or?
Some city staff does as well, city staff does as well.
Okay, so that, that's my question, is I believe there needs to be someone that's trained with that. You can have Southwest there as backup for protection and whatnot, or to, you know, make, you know, alert for the sheriffs. But I think that you need to have someone that's trained that is doing outreach, because I think it needs to be someone that they may feel a little more safer coming out to. I don't, I don't know how it works, but from what I understand, a lot of cities do have to use specialized and trained personnel to do the outreach.
So I, I can just, just speaking about Bellflower, the, the only city people that work are, are from the sheriff's station or from the, the CSOs. But we don't have an equivalent here, which is community service officers, we don't have that level of, of employee here. So, and as far as the training, I think their training is just go out and do it. I don't think they get any special, they might have had one or two eight-hour trainings or something, but there's no, there's no certifications or anything that they, they have, they just go out and, hey, go talk to that homeless guy and get him to move along. Or see if he wants help, that's always the first step.
Okay, let me, let me chime in. On the mental health professional, I do agree that we should have a mental health professional, at least on the scene, because they are professionals that can, they can speak the language of the homeless, unsheltered. And so sometimes what happens when, when you show up and you, you're not necessarily trained as a security guard, armed or unarmed, the, the homeless might get agitated. But if you have a professional there, I think that person would be equipped to kind of, you know, talk them down and move them along or what have you. And they might be open to services, accepting services then. But I do believe that they should be armed. I'll give you an example. So I was, one day I was at Hopper Park, and one guy was sitting on the bench, just minding his own business, and another person was passing by. And these wasn't homeless people, you know, which makes it even more dangerous, and why I appreciate them being armed. And they got in a confrontation. Obviously, they, they knew each other, they had some dealings before, what have you. And right when I was going to call the city manager, Southwest pulled up. His routine stopped because they, they patrolled the parks, right? Routine stops, he's armed, he talked to both of them or what have you. One guy was really outraged, right? I don't know, he was beside himself or what have you. I believe he was gonna lose if they would have got in a fight, but, you know, he was a hothead, right? And, but I believe that the presence of the security guard being armed, cooler heads prevailed. And so, and the guy moved along or what have you, because he was just, he was just walking past from Hopper Park and saw his, his opposition sitting in the park, you know, just relaxing. And he decided to come in the park, you know, and, and cause a stare. So I believe that they should be armed, but they should be, when it comes to the homeless, should be accompanied with a professional, a mental health professional. I don't know how we have, how, what we're gonna do if we want them to be paired with a heat, a professional, if that's gonna cost us some more money or what have you, or if there's an agency out there that, that want to respond, you know, maybe St. Margaret, so what have you, or whatever. But you guys can figure that part out, and then give us a report back.
Are, are they able to get trained? I mean, we're paying all this money, can we ask them to get trained? Like, on how to respond to?
We, we certainly ask them, yeah.
If we're gonna spend all this money and use them as our, them assisting us with the homeless, then?
In fact, we, we could ask them to take a training, we could actually provide a training, that'd be, that'd be a simple fix.
And then the other thing, question I have is, I would like to see a report from either them or you on, at our meetings, on what they responded to, how many assistance, mental health assistance, or how many, what they did that period. That will justify to our residents us spending this much money on a, another, we have sheriffs and then we have them, so.
I can provide-
I'd like to see some reports on, on our meetings.
Yeah, I can, I can provide regular logs.
They come in and present it, or you present it for us.
Of course, I can provide regular logs showing their activity and what they're doing, their interactions, that'd be easy.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so what is the place of this body concerning item 14? No, unless they, in, in the queue, just like he just got up, unless they're in the queue, I'm not gonna call them. Let's hear from the public.
Once again, good evening, everyone. My name is Juan Granados. Particularly to the approval agreement of the Southwest Patrol. From what I understand, because I, I try to help civilly as well with those who I don't even know, there's been lately more people coming again to stay here on these parking structures around here. And I spoke to a young lady the other day, and I said, I had, I, I saw that the Southwest asked you to leave, but did they give you any information regarding help? And they said, "No, they just asked me politely to leave, not, to try not to come back here," that there were other areas. And I said, "So they didn't give you like any information to us too?" Phone numbers or anything? They said, "No." So I gave her some information that I know, because where the courthouse is, right, there's a little box in the wall where there's two secretaries that are civil servants that help precisely for this. They give vouchers for those who are homeless, for one-night stays, you just need an ID. And then there's also Bronson and whatnot. Maybe somehow giving them that information as well could probably help out if you guys feel that maybe it might cost a little bit more, and I understand we're not really budgeted right now, that we're, that we need money. So maybe giving them cards, I could, again, personally go down there, give it to Mr. Reyes the information, and, and see how that works out for, for everybody as well. There's also a few other places that I know I could give Mr. Reyes that information as well, other than just St. Margaret's, that who do an excellent job, but at the time, there's just, like I said, times are very bad, and the more help, the better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman, City of Landale resident. I have some really strong feelings on this particular item. And I'm going to start with reminding Council that when we went out to bid, we knew that they were going to be armed. We asked for that to be in the contract. There was no question about it. Second thing I'd like to bring up is, I do agree that there needs to be a professional available. Now, what does that mean on the telephone in the region? I don't know what that means. But my thought is, you know, we keep hearing about all the money that is coming into the county. Maybe we should be talking to South Bay Cog, maybe we should be talking to the county and saying, "Excuse me, we need some money here for that profession." As far as Southwest Patrol and what we're talking about tonight, I cannot see any other decision other than to increase their services. And the reason why is, you can tell on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights, the increase on our Boulevard, in our areas, we need help. The sheriff's department cannot give us any more. And that's not to say I'm disappointed in the sheriff's department, it's the situation that they are in. We need help. And if Southwest Patrol can give us that extra help so that those officers can be doing other things, and as our sergeant said, and I hate to put him on the spot, that it is helpful, and they do glean information from Southwest Patrol. The one thing I would like to see is holiday coverage also being considered, okay? Option one looks wonderful, include holiday coverage. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Randall Abram. Based on the budget presented tonight, the cost of law enforcement, including the most expensive option for Southwest Patrol, totals 8.1 million. This amount serves a city of approximately 31,800 residents. For comparison, Hermosa Beach, with a population of only 19,000 and its own police department, is budgeting over 18 million for public safety in '25, '26. This includes a staff of 38 officers, including 27 patrol officers, police management staff and a chief of police. This stark contrast highlights that it's neither practical nor financially viable for Landale to transition to its own police force at this time. Ideally, residents want additional deputies, from what we have heard, that is a long way off. Landale's best option apparently is to continue to utilize Southwest Patrol to perform duties that would normally detract from those other deputies. According to the budget report, even if Landale selects the most expensive Southwest Patrol contract, the city will maintain a balanced budget with a surplus of over 35 million. This amount is well beyond what any accounting standards recommends for municipal services. Public safety has always been a major issue for Landale residents. With ample funds available, the deciding factor should be the level of service provided and not merely cost. While option one offers the most patrol officers, surprisingly offers no coverage on nine holidays, including July 4th. Similarly, option three provides no holiday coverage. The cost difference between two and three is about 10,000, less than the 13,000 added to the budget for a single October event. When framed this way, investing in better subjects, public safety coverage seems not only reasonable but necessary. Director Reyes provided me recent updates on the July 4 staffing. One of his comments about Southwest Patrol was, however, as a third and fourth of a joy land on Thursday and Friday nights this year, if the approval for Southwest Patrol goes forward, then Southwest Patrol officers will be working on both of these nights to assist in spotting illegal fireworks and assisting LASD personnel in that way. I fully support Southwest Patrol's contract as long as it includes holidays that add additional safety for resident of Landale and that can provide assistance in controlling illegal fireworks this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I just bring up the dices for more discussion on this item. Bernard Suarez.
Yes, I still stand by my comments. I believe that with regards to outreach, we need to have a specialized individual, or we need to have someone that's trained up. I think we should see if we can have someone from the MSD department take on some of those responsibilities, and, you know, however we need to do it so that they feel safe. I also have a question. If the sheriffs won't allow us to hire more deputy, or if they're unable to provide more deputies to be hired, is it possible to, to contract for one deputy or something from a neighboring city to help with some of the patrols? I, I would just feel safer with an actual peace officer doing some of that. I don't know if that's an option. But those are just some of my comments on there. I, I really think that this was a pilot program, and the one part that I feel like we were lacking in is we didn't get very good updates internally as to how the program was working. There's no numbers, there's no stats, you know, or at least I haven't gotten them, maybe others have, with regards to how this is working out. How many out, how much outreach have they done? How many, you know, recently, we got a, a few emails about it, but I really think that when you do a pilot program, we come back two, two years later and we need to see what's the data, is it worth the service? Because that's always the question, how did it work out? You know, and I need to see numbers, I need to see, you know, because the only thing that I've heard reported is taking pictures of people's homes. And, you know, to me, that's, you know, that's not what these security guards were hired for. So those are just my comments.
Tel Aviv.
Yeah, my question that I wanted to ask is, how did Southwest get the task of homeless outreach? Is that something that we asked them to do, or was that something offered as part of their service?
That was something we specifically sought out.
Pardon?
That was something we specifically sought out when we, when we did the RFP for, for guards. Originally, staff was doing outreach, but staff actually also was not trained on this, and the staff was having problems doing it. They felt that it was dangerous and it was not, it was outside of the scope of their duties. So that's what made the decision to bring in an armed guard team to take over these duties. And specifically homeless services and vendor services, because we had a lot of food trucks and a lot of pushcart vendors, that was also part of their, the scope of their duties. That was something we, we sought out.
Uh, Quavis.
Michael, why didn't they add holidays on option one?
I, I didn't add holidays just for a cheaper option, I could put it back in, these are all, they're all up for the council to decide.
How much more is holiday?
They have nine holidays that they honor, they're listed below, Christmas, New Year's Eve.
Do you know approximately how much?
If we're paying 16 hours a, a day, it would be time and a half, so 16 times, time and a half would be 24, so we'd be paying nine times 24, which would be 218, times 55. So I can add that into if, if, if holidays are desired. That was just an op, that was just a, a way to keep costs lower.
So, so what's the, so what's the, the final numbers? That, that was my question as well.
It was nine, I, I can-
Mr. Finals?
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember, if you, if you just look at options two and three, the bottom line for option two is about 10,000 more than the bottom line for three, so you could-
So about 10?
Imagine this.
Thank you.
Roughly, although I just, to the attorney's point, those, that's only including the existing that we have now, which doesn't include Wednesdays and Mondays, we only have one shift. So if any of those holidays in the next fiscal year land on a Monday or, or Wednesday, they wouldn't have been factored in. So that's slightly off.
So we would have to?
10,000's still about right, but it's, it's not exactly going to be 10,000.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, may I add something to the, the report? So ju, I just want to take everyone back through how we ended up here, just so the record's clear. So Council wanted something to address the homeless, to address the homeless. As we all know, they, the county opened two project room keys in the city of Landale. After the termination of the program, most of the homeless, which I interviewed personally, I walked out on Hawthorne Boulevard with community development staff, they were from Skid Row area. They were brought in, a lot of these homeless were brought in from out of the area, we know that. I actually personally talked to them, Rafael Garcia talked to them, Jared Chavez talked to them, we interviewed them up and down Hawthorne Boulevard, okay? Then, when I came on as city manager, the council was concerned about staff safety. The homeless that were coming in from all areas around the city, they were coming in from Gardena, they were coming in from Torrance, Redondo Beach, and Hawthorne. They were being pushed in our way. Those cities around us have police departments that are a little bit different than our sheriff's department. The sheriffs try to do all they can, but Sheriff Luna has announced they are not going to do, their deputies are not going to do homeless encampments, or unless they have their specialized team or out there and arresting for any kind of crimes. Let me bring you up to data where we ended up. We had a homeless individual that was gang raped, dropped out at City Hall here, if the council recalls. She was gang raped by homeless. We had staff attacked with almost a hatchet. When Caltrans cleans up the homeless on the right-ofways, there was concern from council of staff safety when they go out there and help Caltrans remove the items that the council and residents complain about that Caltrans leave on a right-ofway. In addition, that I had personally been involved in several incidents where the homeless were attacking someone behind City Hall, attacking a female, a male and a female. We also had a man threaten to burn down City Hall and kill everybody inside here. And, and the, the deputies arrested him after we- And the deputies arrested him after we tracked him down, and then he went to court, and then we got involved in that. This is just incident after incident after incident. And let me tell you that Mr. Reyes and myself personally go out and do homeless outreach. I have talked to many of these homeless. They do not want services. I wish we could get them in the services. I'll give you an example. We sent Mr. Ronson out there three weeks ago, out on the embankment on 162. Did he take the services? No. I sent Ronson out there, Reyes went out there and talked to him. We, over on Prairie at 169, there were about 10 homeless there. We asked each and every one if they wanted services. We sent Ronson back there, they didn't want services. So the reality is, yes, we want to provide them services the best we can, but a lot of times they reject the services we asked them for. Mr. Reyes is on the phone constantly with homeless outreach services to the residents. We're very nice to them, we try to work with them, but a lot of times, they just don't want the services. And we get calls seven days a week, 24 hours a day about homeless. 24 hours a day, the homeless come in here. It's a, it's a problem that should have been addressed by the county. It's a social service problem. We're a municipal agency, but we're having to take on these responsibilities. We're doing the best we can with what we have and our limited resources. That's what we've been tasked to do. Council has directed me to make sure that there's always protection for city staff. We did ask city staff if they were interested in doing some homeless outreach services. The council recall, they were not interested. I have staff members that are definitely afraid of a homeless because some of them are aggressive. And I just need to remind the council, we just had a homicide in the homeless encampments over there, and other things have happened more recently. So just so we're all aware, I wish it, they would take the services and we can get them out of here and in place, but the reality is, that's not what's going on. You go to the cities around us, there's encampments everywhere. I've measured the, how we do well with this program, how our streets look. And our streets look better than they did when I started as city manager. Thank you.
Thank you for adding that, Mr. City Manager. Let's hear from Councilwoman Suarez.
Yeah, I'm just confused because I've had actual individuals come up to me saying that they want to do homeless outreach that work for the city. So I guess there's some kind of disconnect. I'm not quite sure what. And if our streets are really that dangerous, then I think we do need more deputies. If the sheriffs won't give it to us, then we need to look elsewhere. If it's really that dangerous out there, I think then we should start going for RFP and trying to get more deputies.
Just in speaking with Sergeant Smith about this, the cost of one full-time deputy for 40 hours a week is about $400,000 plus. For less than that, we would have 112 hours.
But if it's that dangerous, then we should get more deputies.
Well, again, we, again, danger could still be curbed by just having someone making a phone call. So if we had Southwest on, they can, and they see something dangerous happening, they can call our deputies out. So again, I think having more coverage is a better deal. At 112 hours a week, we'd have seven days of coverage. We have 16 hours per day. We can include the holidays as well. We only took the holidays off because holidays typically have been very quiet, although Fourth of July is a little bit busy. But Christmas and other holidays are fairly quiet, that's why that wasn't included. But we can include that, and it would still be, it'd still be cost-effective versus one additional deputy at only 40 hours a week.
I would still motion, if it's that dangerous out there, that's very concerning. I would motion that we go for RFP and try to get deputies however we can.
Quavis.
So we, and we, the hours we have, I'm a little iffy on that, on the hours they're servicing us. Does things stop at 2:30 in the morning?
Yes. Well, they stop at 2:30, because that's when they're off.
Correct, they stop, but I don't think things start until about 8 o'clock, and they go until about 4:30 when the sun starts coming up.
Currently, the hours we have are Monday through Friday, a guard from 8 until 4:30 in the afternoon. And then we have a guard on Tuesday night, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, from 6:00 PM until 2:30 in the morning. We additionally just released the two weekend guards because the funding is about over, so we're running out of money, so we, we cut those shifts. But we did additionally have for most of this year, a guard on Saturday and Sunday days that worked mirroring the Monday through Friday guard, so 8 to 4:30.
But are we able to change the hours of service? Because most of the time, they come out when the sun goes away, when the sun goes down, which right now it's about 7, 8 o'clock. And then they leave again when the sun comes up, about 5 o'clock, 5 AM. So are we able to make changes to schedules?
We can, we can ask for any hours that we want, yeah. So if you want 16 hours to be 6:00 PM until, till 2:30 in the morning, then have the next guard start at 3:00 in the morning until, so they're only working nights, we could have that. Although, I would recommend having a day guard because they are patrolling the parks. We do have homeless people sleeping in the parks during the day. They are patrolling our, all of our facilities. Jason just had a call on the weekend with a lady that was given trouble. He didn't have a guard on because it was earlier in the morning. So I do think having a day guard is vital, but obviously we can put whatever 16 hours the council would prefer.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay, with that being said, I entertain a motion at this time.
I will make a motion for option one with the inclusion of the holidays too. But I'd like to see with that, monthly reports about what they're doing, like Councilwoman Suarez said. And that's, yeah. You want a second?
No, I think I was pretty clear on the direction. And one of the things I did check with Ronson is, no other city has security guards doing outreach, according to him. That was just a point I wanted to make. So I guess we have the most dangerous individuals in our area.
I will second, but I would like instead of monthly, do it every meeting that we have, the report.
Again, I can make them as frequent as you like, it's no problem.
And also, I would like to see, when is this due, the contract? Is it due?
The contract with Southwest will end before the end of this month. So since we won't have another council meeting until July, we could do this fairly quickly. However, the council wants to get approved, I, it probably wouldn't be difficult to ask Mike to provide his guards in the interim until the contract is signed in July, but however the council wants to do it. But I, we'd need an option of what, what we're asking for.
Okay, option one, also include if they could get trained in, with some type of mental health assistance on that.
On dealing with homeless.
Okay, the motion's been made by Mr. Pat Kearney and second by Shirley Quavis. Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number 14, the motion passes with Councilmember Suarez voting no.
Okay, item 15, First Amendment to a Contract Services Agreement for Landscaping and Maintenance and Tree Trimming Services.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The Mariposa has been providing services to the city for the last three years for landscaping and tree trimming. The contract ends at the end of this month. However, the contract we do have provides for two years, one-year extension, and we are taking advantage of the first one. Mariposa is interested in continuing servicing the city, and they are providing good service to us. The increase is minimal, 3.1% for this 2025, 2026 year. And the recommendation, staff recommendation is that city council approve the First Amendment to the agreement with Mariposa and extends it until June 30, 2026. And if you have any questions, please let me know, and I'll try to answer them.
Okay, Shirley Quavis.
All right, a couple of questions. If we were to hire staff to do this, approximately, how much would it cost? And maybe that, if we would have had that, to kind of make our decision? And the second question is, this amount was on the budget?
Yes, it's been included in the budget already, yes.
I don't have the information on how much will it cost to maintain, but a city that does perform the services, for a city of our size, we need five, six people just going around the city, which we don't have right now, to do that. So it will be additional staffing.
How much will it cost though?
I don't have the numbers of how much will it cost.
Could we maybe, for the next round, bring that up, how much to hire within? Because I think we have more of a control if we have staff here that are available to do the work. And then, I want to see RFPs again, because sometimes we extend contracts too long and they get, you know, they get into bad habits, and we need to bring some new eyes into the city.
Perfect, absolutely, we can do that. For next year, we will give you a full report in advance of what, what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bernadette Suarez.
Yeah, mine is jumping off of that point. How often is it advisable to do RFPs? I don't know if city attorney could advise. I don't know if there's some kind of like golden rule. I sit on a nonprofit, and their general rule of thumb is five to seven years. So I'm just kind of wondering if there's like a, across unspoken length of time.
For this kind of work, I think five to seven years is not unusual. And if you look at this contract, it was three years with two one-year extensions, which gives us the five. It does allow you to end it early if the city's unhappy, but the general feel is that absent some unusual circumstance, you'll walk through the two extensions and then do an RFP after five years, which is fairly standard, again, for this type of work.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any member of the public who wants to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Hello again. I just saw this number, and it, almost a million dollars seems like it's really high. And I'd be curious to see how much of that money is going to maintain the row, because maybe this summer, maybe as soon as next month, we may not have to do that anymore. And especially if they're talking about, if we can believe Metro, and who knows if we can, they're talking about clearing the row in September. So I don't know how much of this almost one million dollars goes to cutting the grass and the trees and all of that, which is a big swath of Landale. And piggybacking on that, are, has Metro said anything about the fact that we probably will have more homeless in our city if they're building, you know, this retainer wall and all of this stuff? If you look and you see what happens around metros, especially metros that are kind of hidden, it's going to be a mess. We're going to need more police and less landscape and maintenance if we don't do, if we don't stop them now.
Okay, thank you for that. Maybe we can get a report on how much we're going to save by not maintaining the row.
Mr. Mayor, council, we can look into that. And then, as the council directed last time when we did the RFP, which is a few years ago, we had the other firm that was in here, South Bay Landscaping, for quite a few years, so. But certainly, you guys, you set up the agreement to bring that back in a couple of years for an RFP, and then we can look at the portion that will be taken over once Metro builds that. However, I don't, we don't think Metro's going to, I know the contrary to some folks, that we don't think they're going to start construction right away and cut off the area. It could be quite a few years before they set up construction and start building.
Okay, yeah, it'd be interesting to see the, see the numbers. Bernadette Suarez.
Yeah, this just, I remembered that when we had that discussion about us maintaining the row, there was a question that I had is, does any other city pay to maintain Metro property? And I don't know that we got an answer for that, so I don't know if that's still out there, that question, if we were able to determine if, if any other cities are paying to maintain Metro-owned landscaping.
Mayor, council, I don't know if we, we need to look into that. I don't know if Lucho was able to research into that. We can, we can certainly ask Metro if there's any other city. I can't remember if Mark responded to that. I'd have, I'll just send him an email and ask him, and send it to you guys.
I've been around a long time with Frank, and we used to have our own public works doing the landscape, but the tree trimming was contracted out because they weren't eligible, they weren't eligible to trim the tree, so there was additional cost. But we did have staffing at one time back in the 60s, 70s, 80s. Joe Madrid was one of the staff, but we did have it one time, and the parks did look a lot better because they took pride, because they worked for the city. But then somehow, I think it's when we fell on lean times, we had to cut that and go to contractors, it's cheaper contracted than our own people doing it.
Okay.
I feel that if we contract out, or they don't have that pride. If you hire within, they have the pride of the city. It could be our local, put it out there, put a job out there for local residents that are looking for a job, and they're going to take pride on their work, because they're our staff. But this would be something for next year.
Yeah. Okay, what is the pleasure of this? Okay, Frank, Telavira.
Yeah, so based on that, those comments, Michael, how do we evaluate Mariposa and the job they're, they're doing, or Lucho, sorry? How do we, how do we grade them or evaluate them?
Thank you for the question. There is a checklist, and the, one of our staff follows the checklist that Mariposa says, we completed all this. We check that monthly, and there's constant meetings with Mariposa. Mariposa, from my understanding, is better than who we used to have. And I have been in other agencies where either the contractor quits when we put pressure on them, or, or the city councils the contracts and picks the second bidder after a couple of years. In our case, I think we're in good hands currently with Mariposa. They are very responsive, and we apply constant pressure on, on them stepping it up when, when things are forgotten here and there. It's natural that that happens. But we are, we are happy with Mariposa at this time.
Okay, thank you for that response. What is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
A motion to approve a one-year extension.
Okay, it's been a motion to approve a one-year extension by Quavis, seconded by Telavira. Is there any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number 15, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. The next item is 16, consideration of opening of the time capsule.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is a fun item, so as the council is aware, back in 2000, we did a time capsule right over here in the 4A area of City Hall, and it's coming up on that 25 years. And so we need to consider, the council consider and provide some feedback on redoing that in December 2005, to rededicate plaques, open up the time capsule, look at the items, and then put in new items. I've already found an old cell phone, I think it was the former city manager Steve Mandoki's old flip phone, so something that I provided to Diane to look at. We found it in a box, so that, obviously, it's a little outdated now, so that would be something the council could consider putting in their community. So we need to bring something, we need to pick a date, council give us some direction, some items that you would like to see for the rededication and memorial that we did back in 2000, and redo it in 2025 in December. Funds have not been included for the upcoming fiscal. We're estimating this cost around 6,000, give or take, for the, you know, the rededication of the plaque, the ceremony, inviting the public, all of those things that we'd have a, an event, provide food and snacks. things that we'd have a, an event, provide food and snacks and drinks to all those that invited, invited dignitaries and of course, the council and the community. This concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Okay, any discussion on this item? You say you need possible um, dates?
Possible input of items that you would like.
How much, yeah, yeah, how much time you need um, to put together from?
We have to, you know, a couple, a couple, well, I don't want to put a lot of pressure on Diane, she's already swamped, but uh, probably a good month and a half to put something together, work with Ray Lett and put something together and then come up with some items to put in the capsule, uh, set up the ceremony. Uh, the cost is, because we're redoing the city halls, the council is aware, so we're going to try to coordinate that with our contractor, I don't know if we can, to tear out the wall and rededicate that wall, put the capsule back in, so there's some cost there.
All right. Mr. Pat Kearney.
I like the idea. I don't know why we had to tear down a wall to pull out a capsule. It's not a space capsule, it's a little capsule. Uh, I think we should do it sooner than later because I know we're going to go dark in December and December is the month we're supposed to be opening it. So I'd just say it then probably in November, uh, December, because I think we're going dark between.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I think we have one meeting in December, but I love the idea because I'm going to put one of my suits in there.
I'm, I'm going to put one of your suits in there.
Thank you. But I love the idea. And six thousand dollars, you know, um, if we have to give it um, discretionary funds, I will donate money to that, but I'd like to see it open sometime in December before we go black.
Yeah, I was, I, I would agree. Let's hear from Quavis.
Yeah, I was going to say December, like the first meeting in December, uh, because after that, a lot of people will go out of town and will not be in, be able to celebrate with us.
Yeah.
Is the new capsule that we're thinking of putting, is it going to have like a little door so we don't have to tear the wall down in twenty-five years or are we planning to tear walls down every time the capsule?
I thought you just take the plate, the, the plaque off.
The little, little capsule, if you look at.
You reach in there and.
It's paperwork.
Are you saying we're tearing down the wall?
Well, tearing off the plaque.
Okay.
Sorry.
So it's not the wall.
Well, you tear into the wall and they're redoing everything, so it'll probably get a little messed up, so yeah, it'll be some cost. It's a rough estimate, it probably won't be that much.
Twenty dollars.
So, but we're just give a rough estimate because you know, labor and.
I thought the, the plaque just pops in and pops out.
I thought it came with the capsule. You pull it out.
Right. And then you reach in there and you, like a grab bag.
Well, we can, uh, I can definitely check in it, verify it with Diane and staff and then re-verify.
Okay.
The cost, it was just a rough estimate of costs, you know, because we are inviting residents, providing cake and.
Well, we're fine with the estimate, we were just debating whether or not you had to tear the wall down.
Tear the wall, sorry, tear out the, the capsule and the plaque.
Okay.
So can we set it, tend to leave for the first meeting in December?
Yeah, yeah, let's do that. All right.
So is this a receiving file or discussion?
Yeah, that's a receipt.
Or wide direction?
Did the council have any items that you specifically were thinking maybe?
I'm putting a suit in there, dude.
Yeah.
Maybe a flip flops.
I don't know if we need to.
Don't we have to approve the money?
Pardon me?
Don't we have to?
We, we would be bringing that back for an amendment on the.
The budget.
I think we have a.
So do we have to direct you to include the budget of six thousand since it's not in the budget? Or is it just unanimous consensus?
Well, let's hear from the city attorney.
I think, I think if you have consensus to do the project or to, to do the event, that consensus can include direction to bring back a budget that could come before the council at the same time that other early fiscal year budget adjustments come, so that once staff starts work, there will be money budgeted.
Okay, we're, we're proceeding in that, that direction. Let's move on to item seventeen, animal shelter update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. The staff report you have before you is an update on the animal uh, care contract we have with SPCA. Um, the council had asked that I bring back regular updates on our situation with our animal care and kenneling. Um, as this council is aware, in the past three years, um, SPCA has raised our monthly or annual fees every single year from originally sixty-six hundred dollars a month to what it currently sits at thirteen thousand four hundred. That is an increase of over one hundred percent. The council had asked us to look for options. Unfortunately, there are only three agencies in the South Bay region that are large enough to house the animals which we bring to SPCA. That is SPCA, that is LA County, and that is Lovejoy. Uh, none of these agencies, neither Lovejoy or the county is actually taking on new customers right now. We are in the queue should any openings up, any openings open up, but right now we are still bound by SPCA. We have remained at under fifty, fifty animals per month. Uh, we regularly stay at closer to forty animals per month that we bring them. Uh, half of those animals are deceased, so we're really only bringing about twenty to twenty-five live animals a, a month. However, in an email I did get from the CFO with SPCA, just ten days ago, she did let us know that their rates continue to, their costs continue to raise and they are looking to raise our monthly rate in the new contract in, starting in August, to fourteen thousand one hundred dollars per month. Um, I've already let our finance director, made him aware of this cost increase and I just want to give you this update. Um, this is just a receiving file and I can answer any questions if you'd like.
Okay, thank you for that update. Let's hear from Pat Kearney.
Question, Mike, are we on the waiting list for the Los Angeles County Animal.
We are.
Care and council and Lovejoy's foundation?
We are, and I've also talked to agencies in Downey and Long Beach and, and San Gabriel Valley. They didn't have openings, but also it would just be geographically unappealing for our residents to have to go to any of those cities to retrieve their animals or for our staff to go an hour drive, round trip, just to take animals.
So on this contract we're going to have with SPCA, is there a part of the contract where we can cancel?
That's included in every contract.
Sixty-day notice that we're gone?
Correct, we can, we can exit it as long as we give a thirty-day notice.
Oh, thirty days, okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. Let's move ahead to item eighteen, adoption of a resolution concerning the budget list of projects for road repair.
Good evening again. This resolution was presented to council in, on May of this year and basically there was a, a, a wrong date in there where the transportation committee asked us to redo it, basically, and that's why we're here today. Nothing else is changing, uh, but doing it now will guarantee us eight hundred thirty-three thousand dollars coming in from SB one for our street projects. And that's my report, if you have any questions.
Okay.
My report.
Are there any um, questions on this report?
There's no question, I'll, a motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion to approve by McQuavis and seconded by Kearney. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none, will the council please vote?
For item number eighteen, the motion passes unanimously.
Item nineteen, approve the second amendment to the contract service agreement with all city management services.
Good evening, Jason Mentor, committee services director, hello, mayor and council. Thank you for hearing this item tonight. As you stated, it was a request to approve amendment two to the contract services agreement with all city management services for crossing guards uh, here in the city of Lawndale. Uh, back in two thousand twenty-three, the council had approved a two-year agreement for the same, similar services. Those have not changed with the only exception being the cost per hour or the rate. Um, for the year, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, the cost would increase to thirty-two dollars and thirteen cents per hour for a total of a hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and change. And in twenty-six, twenty-seven, increased to thirty-three dollars and twenty-six cents an hour for a total of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and change per hour. That is four percent per year, uh, as terms of increases. Um, this information has been included in the budget that was already approved. Uh, staff have been reviewing and doing spot checks of different intersections and found them to be in compliance. And I'd only received one call over the course of the year, um, stating that a crossing guard was missing and, and all city management was able to follow up on it. With that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank, thank you for the update. Are there any questions of this um, report? What is the pleasure of this body?
I have a question.
Okay.
Oh, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, there's talk about the elementary school district closing some schools down. If these schools affect the city of Lawndale, is there somewhere built in this contract that we, we won't need those crossing guards anymore?
I'm, I'm sure with the, uh, the way that the contract is worded or was worded in the past, if any adjustments needs to be made, we can come back with a future amendment.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
By Quavis and seconded by Frank Talavera. Any questions on the motion?
Um, I can vote because my screen went black.
Okay, um.
Raise your hand.
Just give it a.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I motioned, so it, it has to be yes.
Not necessarily.
No, it's not that.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, can you give the, the results of the vote? Um, Quavis votes yes.
For item number, what we got, nineteen? The motion passes with councilman, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Kearney voting no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's nineteen. Okay, let, let's um, go on to twenty, award of a contract for construction and inspection services. Yes, sir.
Good evening again. This, um, this is our annual street paving project, uh, together with an annual sidewalk project to go farther with the money. The, with, uh, Public Works followed a standard procedure for advertising in, with the help of city clerk. Um, we received eight um, bids for the project and the lowest bidder is Sequel Contractor for almost one, one point eight million. Uh, one of our recommendations is for city council to award the contract to Sequel Contractors. They have performed very satisfactory work uh, in the city in the past. In addition, um, we obtained bids, proposals rather, for the inspection services from our own call contractors, consultants, and we received the two bids, one for hundred thousand dollars, uh, one hundred and ten thousand dollars, sorry. And um, this company has also performed the same services to the city in the past and they have done, done it well. Uh, therefore, staff is also asking for a, a warrant of contract for inspection services. And lastly, uh, we are asking for the approval of uh, contingency in the amount of fifteen percent for the project. Um, there's enough funding already in the budget for, to cover this project. And that's my staff report. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. What is the pleasure of this body concerning this item? What's this twenty?
If there's no subtraction additions, I'll go with staff recommendation. I'll award the contract, construction to Sequel, to SNA associates for the inspection and I still have contingency of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy and seventy and ninety-two cents.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Mr. Pat Kearney.
I'll second. I'll second that.
Okay, and Quavis has seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number twenty, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Number twenty-one is the memorandum of understanding between the city of Lawndale and ASME Council Thirty-Six.
Good evening, Alamo Mayor and City Council. Um, this item before you is a resolution to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Lawndale and ASME Local eighteen ninety-five, Council Thirty-Six, and a resolution to approve the citywide class, I'm sorry, citywide salary and pay schedule for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. ASME and the city negotiation team met and conferred in good faith to produce a successor MOU, which will expire on June thirtieth of this year. The parties have reached an agreement and was ratified by ASME on June eleventh and is presented this evening for your approval. This three-year agreement will cover the period of July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight and incorporates items that were negotiated and mutually agreed upon, which is attached to the staff report and outlined in a track change format. The total cost to implement this agreement would be two hundred and eighty, oh, sorry, two hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, a budget amount that was pre-approved this evening during the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget presentation. Should city council approve the successor MOU, this approval will also trigger the need to approve and adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six citywide salary pay schedule. As such, staff is respectively recommends that city council adopt resolution CC twenty-five oh six dash zero three one, approving the twenty-five through twenty-eight memorandum of understanding between the city of Lawndale and the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, Local eighteen ninety-five, Council Thirty-Six, and adopt resolution CC twenty-five oh six zero three two, approving the twenty-five, twenty-six citywide salary and pay schedule. This concludes staff report and I'm available for any questions you may have.
All right. Are there any um, questions of, of this um, report?
After I make a motion to go with Ray Lett said.
I'll second that.
The motion's been made that we approve the um, the memorandum of understanding by Pat Kearney and seconded by McQuavis. Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number twenty-one, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Item twenty-two is a consideration of urgency ordinance. We are pulling that from the agenda and we will deal with that at a later um, meeting. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor, council, no items report, thank you.
Items from council members. Twenty-three is, is a citywide customer service training. Who's going to give this report?
Sorry about that. Okay, um, good evening, Alamo Mayor and City Council. Um, during the April twenty-first city council meeting, council member Suarez requested a report regarding customer service training provided to city staff. Um, through the California Joint Powers Insurers Authority, a municipal risk management self-insurance pool, the city has access to a wide variety of training opportunities, either online or in person. CJPIA can customize trainings to meet the, the specific needs of the city at no or little cost. Including this report, staff has provided a list of customer service trainings that were, have been provided over the last five years, as well as a summary of top, topics discussed during those trainings. Um, in the coming months, the city will also host two customer service trainings. One is called a customer service and de-escalation training, which is scheduled for June, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, as well as a customer service and team effort training that is also scheduled for September of twenty twenty-five. Both trainings are developed with public sector, I'm sorry, public sector employees in mind and will focus on communication, problem solving, professionalism and quality of customer service. Um, this concludes staff reports and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, um, any discussion on this motion? Okay, um, Suarez.
Yeah, um, which individuals are doing, is this for all employees or just public-facing employees or? Or who will be attending the training?
This is open to all employees.
It's open but not required?
The one that we have in twenty twenty-five, June, is mandatory.
Okay, for all, including city manager, department heads?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
And we also have some individuals from maybe outside the city who will also be attending.
Oh, even better. Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Are you wishing to speak on this item? Okay, come on. That's here from the public.
Public, I am. I'm Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman, and I support this one hundred and ten percent. One of the things I hear most often from residents is oftentimes when they call up to city hall, the person does not give their name, or just like the sheriff dispatcher, they go brrr, and you don't know what their name is. And yet, we, people that know the employees here at the city hall can just about count the number of them that say, when they answer the phone, "Landale City Hall, my name is, how may I help you?" And there's a scripting that is done. There's scripting in my job that I have to absolutely say, and I have to say it in a manner in which it's understandable. Because I don't know who's on the opposite end of the phone. And I recognize the employees at city hall can see caller ID and they're going, "Oh, them again." But that should never be reflected in our voice. So I absolutely encourage, because oftentimes even myself, who knows, an awful lot of their voices, when they don't tell me who they are, I might question it. And I always will question them to tell me who they are. Because it's just something, it's customer service, and one of the things we want the city hall to be is approachable. And so I'm all in favor of let's get them trained, let's hold them accountable, all the employees, that we're putting the city hall on that level instead of being unapproachable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, one more thing. I want to see, can we make this a regular training? Maybe not every year, but similar to like, for example, we have to take ethics and sexual harassment training, and that's, I think, every two years. I think this is something that should be done regularly. Oftentimes, depending on which department the residents are dealing with, it can be in a very emotional state of mind in which you're dealing with staff. And you have to approach some things in a sensitive manner with them, especially when it comes to things like their homes, or it's, for some of them, it's their livelihood. And whatever state of mind they can be in, you don't know what they're going through. So it's always, you know, you start off with, there's a way to be respectful of the situation and have a bit of empathy for the homeowners or the residents and who we're dealing with. Because, you know, I've, you know, I've had some times when it's been pretty tough and you just have to, you're getting some bad news and, you know, you're trying to keep composed and whatnot. But if it's, if we could just keep that in mind when we're communicating with the public. Because for some of them, it really is their livelihood, and we want to be sensitive to that. That was my only thing. So I think it's helpful to be reminded of this, especially when dealing with them and trying to think through their lens of what they may be going through and de-escalate, de-escalate, as it says in here. Those are my only comments. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for adding that. Let's move to twenty-four. Letter requesting funding for the Landale Youth Development Center project.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, I'll be brief and I'll turn it over to the Mayor Pro Tem. So council asked us to put together an item, and thank you again for the youth development center and the skate park. Appreciate that. And the community, we're trying to get that together. Jason's getting that RFP finalized and up on the street. But however, we've identified a short, we're shortfall in funding. So it was suggested from a council member, from Councilmember Pat Kearney to reach out to state representatives and see if we can get some additional funding. I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, Auntie Maxine gave us four million dollars. Your old boss gave us.
Adam Burke. Adam Burke.
Adam Burke gave you four million dollars. So I want to reach out these letters and ask our newly-elected Richardson and McKinner to fund some money our way, because we're about a two billion dollar shortfall. So if they can kick in four, five million dollars each.
Million dollars each?
Yeah. So I'd like to see these letters go out as soon as possible. I think they start doing, well, you know, when the budget goes out, when they set money aside.
Yeah.
So sooner than later.
Okay.
You can all sign the letter.
Okay. All right.
Want that? That's it.
All right. Without any objections, that'd be done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Report of attendance at meetings. This is council members. Let's hear from Telavera.
Yeah, I do. I just take, you know, pride in being able to participate in all these events and having the time to do it. And so, yeah, sometimes the lists are long, but I appreciate the opportunity. So on June sixth, I attended the Western State's Carpenter's Local Three Two Three, South LA Training Center ribbon cutting. A grand old celebration they had. It was really nice, and then they walked us through a tour of their facility. And any of us can go on any day and do virtual welding. So if you're interested in that, we can do that. We don't need an appointment or anything. And then on the seventh, I also attended the Health, Safety, and Pet Fair. It was really good. I stayed away from the reptile area. Just as I was walking by, one of the caretakers there, and I guess it was her son, I hope it was her son, she just put some type of snake right on top of his head. He was looking at something else, and I was, oh, God, gotta stay away from there. But it was good. It was exciting. Got to meet people there, and I went around and talked to the different vendors that were there, community outreach people that were there, and it was, it was good. So thank you, Jason, and for that. Oh, I was thinking about that. Sorry. Thank you, Michael. Both. Okay, good. Yeah. All right. So, but it was good. Thank you. Also, that, after attending that, I ran over to Senator Laura Richardson's community swearing-in ceremony and enjoyed some time there. Got to see Mayor Bass and the mayor from Carson. And it was an activity or an event well-attended, and it was, it was good to see that. And then on the tenth, we had our first ad hoc committee for the National Hispanic Heritage Month. And that's where I want to just give a highlight of what we discussed. And I want to thank Rellet for the notes. I'm going to actually use your notes, so thank you. So it was Mayor Pro Tem, Pat Kearney, myself, our city manager, Jason, and Rellet. And we had a good discussion. Things are moving in the right direction. And we decided to tentatively schedule the event for October eleventh, from eleven to five at Jane Adams Park. We did consider the things that were happening currently with the ice rays and how it might affect attendance. So we're going to use our event that's coming up on January twenty-eighth just to monitor participation or attendance to the, to the, to the event. I spoke, I reached out to one city, because they're having an event similar to ours. And they said, well, if we pay attention to everything, we wouldn't do anything. So although we, our heart goes out for what's happening, every individual has to be responsible, whether they think it's something that they should or should not attend. We know this. I have friends that have been staying away from extra, extra trips going out into the community and they're homebound. So, but that's, they feel that's what needed, so that's what's going to happen. And so our next meeting will be scheduled after the spring music festival that we have. And then on the twelfth, I attended Hawthorne-Londale Ministerial Association Meeting, community meeting and prayer breakfast. So I saw Matt there, had a good time and had some good connections that we could bring into our city and just the amount of different things that the churches in Hawthorne and Landale are doing. So that was, that was, that was good. And also then on the fourteenth, I attended the city of Hawthorne's Juneteenth Celebration at city hall. Alex was, Alex Montero actually was at the prayer breakfast, and he made the announcement. So I decided to join them on the fourteenth. And again, they had a lively celebration. And I guess some people have said like, the National Hispanic is my pet peeve. Well, I guess this June tenth was Alex's pet peeve. So he was up there on the mic, and he was emceeing, and he was jumping all around. And so he was just having a good time, and so were all the people that were there. So it's, so it was, it was a lively celebration. I enjoyed it. And then today, I attended the seniors' Father Day luau luncheon. A lot of shaking going on. So it was good and enjoyed myself there, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Suarez.
Yes, thank you. One item to piggyback, I would like for us to consider using maybe Will Rogers' Anderson location for some events. We always do them at Jane Adams, and I just feel like we may, it'd be helpful for members of the community that live in other areas to have a chance to have events closer to them. So we've used William Green, and we use Jane Adams, sometimes the community center. But I think it'd be nice to rotate it to the other side of the city. So that way, people can say, oh, we have an event near us this time. That's just food for thought for future events. And then I attended, I think it was last Monday, the steering committee for the COG. I actually got to chair that one. It was my first meeting. I got to chair, so it was pretty exciting. But we just set the agenda for the board of directors meeting, which is the last Thursday of this month. And then a couple items that I wanted to ask about. A while back, we discussed the code enforcement process and what our process is and whether there was a manual. Turns out, there is a really outdated manual. And then I asked for workshops. I was just wondering when that's going to come back for discussion? Because I know there's been more outreach regarding how things get handled, so more clarity and transparency with regards to the process. Just asking for, you know, if and when that will come back. And then some things that I've been thinking about that might be nice programs. From what I understand, back in the day, there used to be a program where if residents had overgrown lawns, like an elderly person or disabled, I think city staff would go to the property and mow the lawn or something like that. Because there are a lot of individuals, I think, you know, elderly or whatnot. Maybe they can't get around to it or something. I think that was somewhat of like a goodwill program that we did. I just want to get more information. Do we still do that? If not, can we bring that back? I just think it'd be nice for, you know, for certain elderly individuals or whatnot. Some kind of a good neighbor program where we could help, you know, those who really need it and whatnot. And then one other one, which might sound a little silly, but just to make city hall or some of the departments more approachable, maybe like a bring-your-pet-to-work day or something like that. Just something to kind of lighten up the mood. I know, you know, unfortunately, probably MSC probably gets the more angrier crowd just because you deal with enforcement. Maybe something like, you know, if one day out of the week, someone can elect to bring their pet to the, I don't know, city hall for the day or something, for a few hours or however, just to kind of lighten the mood, just things to make the city more approachable. Just a few suggestions or things I thought might be cool to do. But yeah, with that, I'll pass it along. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Quavis.
All right. Well, I attended the Health, Safety, Pet Fair. Thank you, staff, for putting it together. It was a good event. I liked the obstacle course. That was good. Maybe next time we could promote it a little bit more so that there's more kids out there. But it, it was nice. I did halfway. Well, I did it all, but I fell off the, some of the games that they had a couple of times. Got back on it and kept going. But it was a very good fair. I do, would like to ask finance if they could have a credit card reader. We were only accepting checks or cash, I think. But there were people that wanted to pay with a credit card. And they were being sent to the app that was on the table. But if we could maybe do a car reader, I don't know. I don't think it costs too much to get one of those.
I'll find out what we can do, yeah.
Okay. And maybe have it for any of our events that we have. We could just do that. Mr. Lucho, do we have any more of those little trash cans for recycling the food? And if so, could we start promoting those again so that the residents know that they're available in your department?
We do have more. We can advertise them again. And we take them to all the fairs, by the way, so we'll continue to do so.
And it was, I think it was a good hit, having them at the event. But I think if people know that we still have them out there. Ah, Jason is showing me it's in the Landalian that just came out.
Perfect.
And maybe if you could bring a sample of what it is so that whoever's watching could see it at our next meeting?
For sure. Thank you.
This goes, I guess, to every department. I would like to see any contracts that are due to be presented to us at least two months prior to them being due. Because if we get them a week or two weeks prior to them being due, we have to approve it or we're out of that service. So if we could get any contracts at least two months, give us an idea that that's coming so that we could be prepared. That's just something that I've learned at my own properties at work, that we need to have them ready two months prior to them being due and possibly have RFPs behind it or some explanation why we want to continue with that contract. That's all for me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, I also attended the Health, Safety, and Pet Fair. Staff did a great job. I also attended the Hispanic American Festival with Frank, Councilman Telavera. I attended Lobby Trust and Oversight Commission meeting on the eleventh. We paid out more money for some deputies more east of Landale. I attended the Father's Day luau luncheon. I was kind of shocked because it was a luau. We had jambalaya. So it must have been southern Hawaii that did this, because I don't know we have jambalaya. But it was a great time. Frank was giving us little goodies. And I also mentioned on the twentieth of this month, we had the Landale Music Festival. Frank, you give out your buckets there, okay? Make sure, Mr. Lucho. Maybe bring out your buckets to the music festival on the twenty-eighth. Have a booth there. Get rid of those. With that, I'll pass it on and just remind everybody, we won't see anybody till next month on the twenty-first.
Okay.
That's an deal. That's all on to you.
Oh, the twenty-first? It says the seventh.
Seventh, we canceled.
The next regular meeting will be held? No.
Can we cancel this? Yeah, we did.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, we canceled it.
Oh, the way it's written, it's, you would think it would say that it was canceled upfront.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
So I attended the Los Angeles County Sanitation District Board of Directors regular meeting. Also attended the Senator Laura Richardson swearing-in, community swearing-in. Auntie Maxine was, was there.
Auntie Maxine.
Yeah. I also attended the Father's Day luncheon luau today. And I attended the health, safety, and pet fair. That was a great event. I want to thank the staff for putting that together. I have a question. I was approached by a resident who wanted to know if we can put on a, a plant, a tree planting project for youth that has passed away. For instance, her child passed away and so she want to do a, she want to do a, plant a tree in honor of her child, her deceased child. So if we can put together a program where we can recognize any youth in Longdale who has passed away, we can just plant a tree. So if you could look into that, city manager, for me?
Thank you, Mayor, will do.
And that's all I have.
Okay. The next, the next scheduled, the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on July seventh, two thousand twenty-five was canceled by order of the city council on April twenty-first. The next regular scheduled meeting of the city council will be held on July twenty-first. See? Twenty twenty-five, six thirty PM in these here chambers, and we are now adjourned. You got some? Need me to sign something? Okay.